Hello, hello, hello friends and welcome back. We're yet again studying up for 1.6. Getting Stardew Valley, Rockin' and Rollin'. There it's capturing here. Alrighty. Uh, we just had a little chat about the wonderful food we just got from HelloFresh and just had for dinner. But now it's time for Stardew, for prep, or grinding. First day of fall, so we gotta go pick up some plants. We've got to...
I made two new sprinklers for us to put in. Just standard size.
Yeah, yeah, but those would be handy. Got the hammer for next time I go down into the dungeons. It could help faster. Oh, the best season, yes, for sure.
Backpack upgrades are also only 10G if we want to get some sp- session.
Um... We might consider that?
I am...
We could technically get the last alt bundle done.
We could.
Alt foraging, but here we are. Oh, hazelnut and a common mushroom. Well, I see a hazelnut up here. I'll look around for a common mushroom. Both of them if I find them.
Do you want to buy the... Produce and stuff, or...
I can do that. I can, I can buy some, some fruit seeds.
Then I will go back to the farm and I will start plotting stuff out and I will let you know how much of every...
Okay.
Reoccurring crops, though, we like crops that produce multiple yields. We should have a whole of these.
Sounds good.
Maximize our crop intake.
Mix out. I'm currently doing a lap for foraging, looking for a common mushroom. If I can find that, then I can get our fall foraging done for the... Just to check, did y'all do the fruit back cave? I believe so.
Yes, we did.
Because otherwise, I believe the common mushroom as well as a few other things would, we already would have gotten those. Goodness, puppy, no barken please. Hey.
Yibo.
I'm asking nicely.
Yibo is not that deep.
I expected that it'd be... What's up, Minus? Just spent some... We're deep into the caves. No. Hey, common mushroom. That is fall foraging done. Turned in, of course. How's the count going?
Um... It, it was fine until just a second.
I'm so sorry.
No, you're okay.
Did I steal the brain cell that was...
Yeah.
That does sound really interesting. About to give Coral Island a look. I'll have to double check the maven, one of the ones I've recently added to my wishlist.
It's on my wishlist.
Yeah, I think Tamara recently gave me a whole list of games that I added to my wishlist. I don't really have.
Thirty-six plus one thirties. And that's just with the sprinklers that I just put down. I have another standard four sprinkler and then we have our big sprinkler. Goes out two spots.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Because we made that one, but it was just placed funky, so it went with the little sprinkler. Move it down.
But we did literally create this save file to test like different layout. Files of stuff. That is a bundle complete.
Heck yeah.
Gets us thirty fall seeds.
Heck yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I don't...
Wild fall seeds, but fall seeds.
Yeah.
Uh, exotic foraging. We still need a red mushroom, cactus fruit, maple syrup, oak resin, pine tar. We just started producing pine tar.
There is pine tar at the, I'm looking at it.
Cool, cool, cool. Uh, yeah, if we can get pine tar and either oak resin or maple syrup, we can get exotic foraging done.
Okay, well, maybe you tapped trees.
I tapped two different trees.
Yeah, we do not have maple yet.
Dang, dang.
So, but definitely oak.
Yeah, we, we tapped two trees, so we should be on the way already. Hell yeah. And then we'll just have some winter foraging, which we can kind of get away with if we just go to the winter section of the cave. There's like a very small chance we can find those items. Or we can just properly wait till winter because we're not gonna do any farming that time.
No.
Hmm, top choices. Alright, uh, do we know about what I need to pick up?
Um, I'd say between thirty and...
Okay, with the thirty that I've already picked up?
Uh, yeah, because those are just...
Um, do you want any like odd things or do you just want the stuff that's like safe and gonna produce us what we need?
Um, I don't know. What we got in there?
Uh, pumpkins, corn, eggplant and bok choy, yam, cranberry and wheat. Uh, sunflowers, fairy, amaranth, grape, grass.
Um, we should definitely do some pumpkin.
Okay. I'm gonna pick up, say, they're a hundred, so ten pumpkin seeds?
We can pick up ten or just like... Or four.
Okay, I'll do four.
Yeah, we could do four and just put them on a sprinkler system.
Yep, that's a good point. Alright, so four pumpkin seeds. I'm gonna pick up corn. They're gonna continue to produce, so I'm gonna go with...
We have...
They're a hundred and fifty, so just like...
We have one, two, three, four, five, six, uh, things of corn right now, but... Again, they reproduce.
Right, right, right. I'm just gonna get two based on the way they're placed, me looking over at your screen.
Okay.
Uh, I'm gonna get two of them. Uh, eggplants, five days to mature, continue to produce. They're only twenty, so in that case, maybe buy like five or ten?
Yeah, sounds amazing.
Five, we might come back to it. Bok choy, four days to mature. Uh, does not re, like, continue to reproduce and goes for fifty.
Hmm, we grab like five, six of those?
I'll grab six. We got yam, cranberries, wheat and sunflowers.
Definitely do cranberries. We should do two or three, maybe three or four.
I'll do four. Expensive, but cranberry will be quite a bit. Because that's gonna make like jams and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Wheat is cheap, so I'm gonna get about ten of those.
Yeah.
We can just make a whole wheat section.
Yeah, I'll clear a spot.
Get some yam seeds, but just like four. Uh, oh crap, I didn't mean to sell those. The wheat.
Oh, that's okay.
Gosh dang it. Trying to move stuff. And then would you rather get sunflowers, uh, or fairies?
Um, let's do some fairies because I have some sunflowers.
Uh, let's do... Alright, I think it's a good haul. Next backpack upgrade is, yeah, ten G, so... You know, I'm doing okay for now. I don't know about you?
Hmm, alright now. I mean, it'd be nice like fishing.
That's fair, fair, especially if you're catching a lot of like, uh, leveled fish. Get as many of these plants as possible.
If you wanna put half of them in the chest.
Uh, yeah, absolutely. I will start by putting...
We should put the wheat along the edge because there might be days we forget.
Oh, uh, I'll have to double check, but I think red mushroom will get, between red mushroom and pine tar, we can get one of our boxes done.
Oh my gosh, I forgot. We had eighteen pumpkin seeds up in here.
Oh, up in here?
Yeah. I have...
Up in here.
I have some life here.
Ooh, uh, created the pumpkin patch up in the top right. If you wanna match it on the top left, I think we look really... I'm gonna put, uh, the thirty fall seeds in the brown box there. I'm gonna go plant this corn where I was thinking to earlier. Oh, it's gonna rain tomorrow, so we...
Yeah, we just gotta get some.
Thing of eggplants.
I have eleven pumpkins. I'm gonna put one more.
Okay.
I'll come in with other stuff, but... One should be...
Thirty. Anywhere I can fit, yeah.
Oh, no, put the wheat along the...
Oh. That's right, that's right. How do I...
You're not gonna be...
There's, I'm pretty sure there's a way you can pick up your seed.
Uh-uh.
Oh. Your custody, there's a reason your farm is set up as a checkerboard. Uh, not intentionally, it's just... Yeah, just like the way that as we picked up more and more sprinklers.
We won't have to water them.
Yeah, at some point, we'll actually sit down and do the math on like the most efficient way to do sprinklers, but as for right now, we're... Powering through, uh, the seasons as quick as we can. There, no. Alright, uh... Yeah, gotcha. Yeah, yeah, no, we're just like, it was quick and it was an easy way to set up a sprinkler system that didn't like hurt the brain or like mess up the farm. That, that's about it.
Didn't get all those seeds.
Uh, we got most.
Fall seeds.
Uh, we didn't get the wild seeds down, no, but we also didn't necessarily, they could just save us money later in the season.
Did you not put wheat? I tilled this entire side over here.
Oh, okay, it just came undone.
Yeah.
We help re-till it real quick. So...
And then I was just gonna fill in the...
There it is.
Okay, we have two pumpkins left.
Wild. I'll just hold on to them for now because they continue to reproduce, right?
Pumpkins?
No? Oh, oof.
Yeah, so I was gonna put it down. Well, I don't think pumpkin. I'll just till it. Just gotta remember to water the lone pumpkin. Oh...
They do not sell for a lot though, unfortunately. That sucks, but we do need them for our community stuff, so...
Things you...
Oh, yeah. And... Yeah, red mushrooms. And go, we had pine tar.
Nope.
Uh, what boxes we put the pine?
Oh, I grabbed it.
Good. I was just gonna take both of those and get the exotic foraging done. Appreciate you. Um, room, winter foraging, yep. Mushrooms, or red mushroom. Oh, they do sell for them.
Oh, the community board's up.
Oh.
When you go into town, that cutscene should be up.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, there it is.
Sorry, the special orders.
Right, right. It's like the secondary community board. Oh, come on there, Shelly. Should know about the perfect time. Hmm? What's this? Get our new special orders board. Robyn and I built it from scratch. Uh, Louis, all you did was hold the nails. Ignore her.
Bips, I saw that.
Now, let me explain. You see, with Dust2 and the farm back in business, the local economy has been, has really been picking up. If Bips, uh, there's talking about that.
I'm sorry.
It was just funny. Then when it cuts in, you probably can't see us.
I cannot see you.
Some of the local townsfolk have been asking me for a way to source local ingredients for their businesses or personal projects. Robyn and I came up with the idea of a new special orders board where people can post bigger jobs than would make sense for the old billboard outside Piers. Yeah, for example, I plan on requesting some hardwood for a bed I want to make. I won't put you on the spot, but if you want to help me out, you can just accept the job from this board. Who knows? Maybe if the bed turns out well, I'll start selling them in my shop. I look forward to helping. So can we say that you're on board? Boom. Well, I'm sure you're busy, so we won't keep you away from your work any longer. As always, I appreciate your willingness to contribute. Take care, Sully. Yep. Also, Leah laughing at her pun that whole time is me. That's a mood. Ooh, gold star berry. Like foraging. Boom. Bam! Let's go. Five, Autumn's Bounty. Holy cow, plus two foraging, plus two defense. Plus two hundred and twenty energy, plus ninety-nine health. Yeah, uh, if it's alright with you, I think I'm gonna run to the mines.
Um, it's already two fifty in the afternoon. I would wait for a day where you spend your entire day in the afternoon.
In the mines?
What?
Hit my entire day in the mines. What else were you saying?
That way you can clear more levels without, and like materials without losing quickly because you have that.
Alright, right? Hmm, nothing. Dungeons. Alright, check the job. Furious substance. Extremely rare and powerful group known as ectoplasmic, can be found in the remains of slain ghosts. Wizard wants that? Although wizard wants both these, or prismatic jelly. Requires assistance in tracking down dangerous prismatic slime within the local caves. Bring me a jar of it. Prismatic jelly and you will duly reward it, six faith. Uh, I might, might accept that to me.
Train.
Oh, that's right, I know. Uh, I will take that one.
I caught an eel.
Oh, let's go! I believe that's one of the ones left on our checklist, yeah?
Yep.
Hell yeah! I feel good. Oh, just the stare you're giving me over my shoulder, ah! I'm sorry that I looked back. So I've just gotten stabbed in the eye.
I didn't stab you in the eye, don't tell people that.
No, but I said may as well with the look I just got. Shooting daggers.
Just put them on the top shelf, I can't reach.
What do we have seeds? Mission. Hey, let's go. Ooh. Oh. Oh. Perfect. Whoa, got walleye. A golden walleye.
You also finally got your old mariner.
Yeah! Finally. Uh, let me go to the fish tank. Specialty fish, you know. For fish, night fish? It's a night fish! We got the two last night fish!
Oh, hell yeah!
We did it!
I'll meet you at the community center.
Yep, see you there. Hey, let's go team!
Hmm, just what I wanted, seaweed.
Always bet on purple. Dee-dee-dee. Dee-dee-dee.
Excuse me. This is kinda gross.
Well, at least from my perspective, it may have been very rumbly and loud for chat, but I'm sure you're good. Alright, I will wait for you to turn in my walleye. And I wish I could do a silly little dance. Kind of one thing I wish I already did have was like emotes or something.
They did.
Do we not? Do we?
Open your chat box.
Uh... Doesn't seem so.
Ah.
Unless like there, oh, there's like... There's these. Hey. That. My turn. Night fishing, walleye. Bundle complete.
Need to pick up some other bundle rewards.
Ooh, small glow ring. Uh, I don't know if we both get these or not, so worth checking. I should probably check all the other ones as well, just in case.
They just want my money.
Uh, we got that room completely done, so there's no, no more rewards to claim there.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Yeah, no, I think we just get one per farm.
That's fine.
Yeah, I'm cool with that.
Or I can't see nothing outside, though.
You want a glow ring?
Nah. Oh. Do you want my ruby ring or the Reese's attack fight?
I know, I'm not wearing this ringside. And I'll just stick to you? Does it, does it fit?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, there we go.
It's an artifact.
I was, I was lagging for a second, you're good. Oh. Ooh.
Wow, click.
Play, yay!
That's what I wanted, though. Dang it, I had mayo with the chickens.
What?
I, um... I'd put some mayo in.
The way it was phrased, I didn't, I didn't quite get what you were saying.
Good night.
Hmm, good night. I'm gonna just go straight to the mine store, I'm gonna grab food.
Okay.
Wish me luck. I'm also taking the hammer, so yeah, definitely wish me luck. We'll see how it goes. Off we go. Ooh, I got mail. You're silly, I'd like to give a special treat. Could you bring me one bunch of amaranth? Oh, oh shoot, have to grow some.
Well, it's Wednesday, so...
Yeah. I gotta go hopefully find a prismatic slime while I'm gone. Nope. Bugs? Take... New food, ease guide. Like that we have a good stack.
Can I leave here watering? You can't.
Uh, for sure, for sure. I'm just gonna leave it in the, the red box.
Thanks.
Because that's, I was just there.
Oh, I underestimated the sprinkles down here.
Did it, did it do more or did it not?
No, it did less. What is the point in me spending the material cost to make a better one, though? If it, if it watered the same amount?
Yeah, better we, we didn't under, like it did like the angles or something?
Oh, yeah.
Let's look up the maps of how each one of them is phrased when we...
I'm really not worried about crops till greenhouse is done. To be completely honest, like...
If I could be a hundred percent honest, I'm not super worried about it until 1.6 comes out because we're starting a new farm.
Yeah, I guess, I'm just having a vibe, man.
Yeah, I'm just having a good time.
Got some oak resin.
Nice.
Need maple syrup too?
Uh, if possible.
Okay, I think, did you make three tree tappers?
I think we finished that one. I think we, we finished that tab.
Hey, I found the common mushroom.
Uh, yeah, I think, I think that one also got done. Alright, starting at one ten.
Ooh, and I got a large egg. Nice.
Hell yeah! Hell of a recharge. Yeah! Hammer's pretty good. I'm gonna take some hits using it. To eat. Extra. Yeah. Normal swings. Bullseye. One. Two, hell yeah. Timing's actually a little easier to get down. I'm on... Don't wave my hammer. Out of here. Oh, I'm lagging. Might get disconnected. Nope, oh, we, we're good, we're good. Well, maybe not good because there's a bad attack me, but... Come on, don't. Aim at it. Ooh. That is great. Oh, shot. Flag. Oh well. Had to be down soon. Come on. Believe in you game, believe in me. There we go. When I go to it. Ishim gold. This is. Ooh, dope ass. Hey, good scent. Ooh, a large egg. Good job.
Yeah, me and my chickens are, we're, we're fine.
Easy.
I know. Yeah, drink.
Come here, you bastard. Hammer time. Oak resin donated. Awesome. Thank you. Hmm. I heard of. Yeah. Give me the way. Yeah.
Yes, man.
Busy. Run away. Just kidding. Call an ambulance. But not for me. Take a second layer of them. Bounce them in. Very handy. Have a ladder, please. What? Back. Don't make it be last. I'll be very sad. Oh my goodness. Alright, couple rocks left over here. More ladders ever? No! Don't you put that juju on me Ricky Bobby. I can. That dude, I don't know what that dude's problem is, but he bothers me. He weirded me out. Wait for it. Hell yeah. Oh, oh god, ah, what the? World breathes fire. What nonsense is that? There you go. First day. Get the next ladder. Thing that I would classify as a prismatic slime is. No, no. Look at that. There we go. Look at that. Genius. Smart chocolate. Ding. That was for you. Yeah. Hey there. Yeah. Called it. That. So many bat wings. Any bat winged Wayne fail union. I gotcha.
I did.
I don't care if my jokes are lame. I made Vibz laugh, so I win. I have a. Unless I get the next couple ladders really quickly, I think. Being a. Visiting. I get, oh, well. One. Big room. Happening right. Come on. Go get some. Come here. Messed up. Will you believe in me? Alright, well, I'm gonna rush it then. Oh, what? He just healed that dude. How dare you? Get up and slam and welcome to the jam. Everybody get up. Time to slam now. Come jam, do your dance. Uh. Come on. I hit it, it shouldn't be able to hit me immediately. He's here. Surprise. Oh, do you think you're the one gonna get slammed? I should get slammed. Out here. Get a ladder. Almost missed. Oh, oh crap. Oh no, a bad, oh, I do. Oh no. Get out here. Come on, gimme ladders. Awesome. I walked all the way over here. Could have taken the mine. I could take the mine cart back. I thought we unlocked that last time.
Me too.
Better. Ooh. That gave her a, hmm. One. Uh, oh, there's no bad guys. Out. Me through. Gimme out. There we go. Move quick, move quick. Good night. One more. Any one of these has a chance to be it. Yes. 120. That's bottom. Skeleton key.
Home. Now get home.
Yeah. Even mine. Run, 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 run. No, not, not that time. Wrong one, wrong one. Bust up, bust up. We're zooming, we're moving, we're zooming. Go, 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 go.
I made plays over shots.
Good job. Go to bed. Go to bed, go to bed, go to bed.
Oh, that was kind of close.
Didn't die. Forty minutes to spare. Hell yeah. Good job, gang.
It's raining.
The dungeon done. At least everything you can like learn about it. I gotta figure out where prismatic jelly is. Here.
They're on the lower level.
I would imagine, but. Being a hundred percent real. Hmm. Uh. Here. Car. Those, those in there for now. There. Watering can. Think we're doing good, dude.
That for real.
Yeah. I was like, I was sitting here like, man, what, what should we work on now? Honestly, whatever we want. We're kind of going like that right now.
Don't have a, I think, a cowhouse yet.
We do not. A barn?
Yeah.
Yeah, I had to think of it too, don't worry. Um, yeah, we do not have a barn yet. Uh, do you want me to work on that?
Yeah, I don't know the materials off the top of my head, so.
That's fair. Um, I will go find out. Worst case situation, uh. Not in today. Uh, do you want me to just sell this gray fish? And we don't need it for any boxes?
Yeah.
Alright, alright. Pop that in there. Alright, I'll go find out how much a barn costs. I, I always. It's not working. The Sebastian. Construct farm buildings. Uh, barn costs 6,000 gold, 350 wood, 150 stone. Can you check our brown box to see if we have that in our current resource?
Yep.
Issue it, yeah. Um, I think I'm gonna work on clearing the rest of the stumps off of the property because I think I got about half of them last time. I wanna say that we still have quite a few down in our south side.
We need what?
Uh. 350 wood, 150 stone.
Yep.
We got it?
Yeah.
Awesome, awesome.
Do you want me to bring it up there?
Um, totally up to you. I'm about to swing back that by that way. Um, and you bring it up there, then I can help you place it or help you move stuff on the farm while you place it or um, we can do that vice versa. I can just come grab it and then take it back up. Um, but I'm gonna start working on logs, uh, if, uh, if you want to take materials up.
Okay, I'll take them up so you can work on logs. Also, there's something for you in your red chest.
Ooh, thank you. Need to check if the hat shop has. Had anyone.
The hat shop's always down.
Oh, it's always down there?
Guy went down there.
Oh, perfect. Then I will.
The thing in your chest is.
Oh, well then. Cows, yes, absolutely. Welcome into our. The good old cap. Perfect. A newsboy cap. Please sir, now have some more. Or. Milky, scar of the purposes, right? But I require assistance in checking the rare and dangerous prismatic slime within the local cave. Bring me a jar of its jelly. Yeah. That out. Alright. Uh. Own logs and then tomorrow I'll go back to my.
And put the chicken right here.
Chickens right where? Yeah, chickens there, it's fine. You want me to clear any of the space around? I'll clear this right here.
Yeah, as much as you can. If you don't mind. Cause I'm gonna put the cows over here where the chickens were.
Just want to give you a room to put a little like fence area around it, maybe some gates. So they can move like maybe around the pond or something. Clear all that up.
But I'm gonna. Put the barn where we had this.
Okay.
Boom.
This app. Um. This is a line right here. That. Heck yeah. You can put a little gate on that side or that side or both. Gonna fence it around the pond like that. No. Ooh. Okay. Don't think I can get this. It get long, need to. But I can get stone. I'm gonna see. Yeah. Perfect. The one. Oh, dude. Top. Had to. The house. Here.
Once the greenhouse is built, we can.
Barn will go where the. Were. We get in there, get. Stumps cleared out for you. How's? History room. History room.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Eat. Um, no. Ooh. That soggy newspaper ended up making a torch.
What?
Free torch. That too actually light up some new building.
Heck yeah.
Uh, let me get, craft up some.
I don't think we have them crafted. We definitely get craft.
Oh yeah, we got tons of coal in. Yeah, you know. Wait, that.
Hello chickens. You are so much closer to me now.
She is going to make it your problem.
Oh, we're done with the gold corn.
Woo! Live amongst the chickens. You'd get away with it, I think you would.
Fun fact about me, IRL, my family raises chickens. Um, our chicken of choice is gonna be a Rhode Island Red and double the amount of that in quail. Probably triple the amount. You like your little hat?
I love my little hat, thank you. It is very perfect. Then tomorrow I'll go. Attic jump. Yeah, okay. Up to three geodes, but we'll wait until we get a good little stack where the spirits are really favoring us. Ooh, it is getting late. Head to bed. Good night.
It's gonna rain again tomorrow.
Woo! I love fall. Hey, let's go level four foraging. Oh, an hydrate, thank you, friend.
I got it.
Level four foraging. Axe proficiency, wild berry harvesting, new crafting recipe, charcoal killing, heck yeah, wild seed, uh. Very excited now. Aggressive.
I was also planning on going to the mines as soon as I check on my chickens.
Fair, fair. I think I'm gonna shoot for like eighty or ninety in the mines.
Okay. Um, I have two bok choy's ready, so I can put two seeds.
Heck yeah, heck yeah. I don't know if bok choy is in our fall crops, but you can check it real quick if you click. Or I can check it real quick if you look.
Got it.
Okay.
It is not.
Okay, so yeah, we can use it or we can toss it. We can sell it. We can like save it for whatever the fall festival is. I'll, let me check the calendar real quick as I pass through town, cuz I forgot to take the work cut. Yeah, buddy. Uh, we have the valley, the Stardew Valley Fair on the sixteenth and Spirits Eve on the twenty-seventh.
Uh, the one on the sixteenth, I do believe is the. Is the hey, bring your stuff.
Yep. And yeah, dude, it absolutely is a HelloFresh reference. It is a HelloFresh stream. Our hosts, our whole stream here on Sundays is courtesy of HelloFresh. Woo! Stardew Valley Fair. Yeah, that's gonna be fun. Dude, me too. Uh, and I have not only signed up and tried two of my meals from HelloFresh now, but, uh, it seems that somebody else in our viewer base has also signed up and, uh, signed up for the little coupon deal that you get as well as the free breakfast item for life. So hopefully. They, they enjoy it once they receive it, if they haven't, have or haven't already. I'm, I'm excited to, to continue eating mine. Uh, I'm gonna shoot for ninety.
Ninety?
Yep.
Okay, well, I just wanted to go to the bottom of mine, bro.
That's fair. Uh, I'm looking for a prismatic slime in particular, so. Ooh, dodge that, hit that. Keep moving. That, fall on the floor, uh. So. That always hits me at the worst times. Dude, die already. Alright. Alright. Uh. Oh. There it is. Dude, sounds like, how do we, how do we get out of here? Ah. Find this prismatic slime. Squish it. Did you pick up the prismatic slime question as well?
I did not.
Gotcha, gotcha. Don't know if you're able to find one.
I'm here for resources.
Let's try the nerd. Where'd he go? All the way over there? Shoot. Pushed. You watched that clown? Yeah, absolutely. Get in the cannon, clown. You're going through the big top. You sign up for the Joker's king? Get in the cannon. No, no, I don't want. Everybody in their first week has to get in the cannon.
Oh.
Oh no, dig, dig faster. Dig life, your life depends on it.
Leave my open lung.
It just appeared out of nowhere.
Would you dig?
Oh, I'm digging, alright.
Your hammer.
Ah, ladder.
Huh huh.
Alright, I need to find a prismatic slime. Oh gosh dang it. There's a bomb.
Ladder.
Let's go. Still not, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to create a level of enemies. Cuz there's a chance I still find a prismatic slime. Uh, and I need that. I'm sure it's gonna like look cool or something like, like I'll be able to tell as soon as I see it, but.
What are you looking for?
Prismatic slime?
Yeah, you'll know. It's rainbow.
I had a feeling, but I'd never done this question, so. Didn't wanna say that and be wrong. Right, well. Takes a wide algae always. Sounds good. Alright, um, go this way. Didn't see one going down the ladder. Ready down here?
Yeah.
Alright, cool. Oop, now it moves. Ah, dang it, door scroll three.
Oh god, I'm gonna pass out.
Oh. Energy?
Yeah, uh, health.
Okay, okay, I'm coming. Eat that. Oh gosh dang it. Freaking magnet rings going too crazy. You get it?
Yeah.
Alright, cool. I'll bend these guys off. Don't touch my way. You doing alright?
Yeah, thank you.
No problem. That's why I always bring HelloFresh into the dungeon with me.
Ladder.
Uh, double checking for any more slimes. Nah, forget it. Organic ad segues. Brought to you by Sully's Kisses. Want me to promote your product? Expect this. I mean, it's not, it's not very good, but it's honest.
Yeah.
Oh no, there's not so rainbowy.
There's a ladder over here.
Yeah, so that's.
Oh no! How did, how did that even happen?
Oh no. Oh no. It also gets sin ears and big cave carrots. Oh, that's such a great idea.
I had full health in the no house. And I lost my aquamarine. Alright, I don't wanna hang on the mines anyway.
Alright, do. Could be able to go pick up most of your stuff.
Yeah, I'm gonna go pick up the aquamarine. I can't pick up the gold, but. See you in the morning, aquamarine.
Since. Mine. Well. Got haze in there. You wanna make a coffee?
No.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's fun. Popper. That way, boy. Favor. No geode. Tell that troll cuz it's pretty no talks about. Yep. Killing it. Uh, and now we have iron, so we could. Upgrade to iron tools if we.
Yeah, that's what I was.
I see. Um. Grab, pull more iron, get train moving. So. Okay. And we got more than enough iron for a while. Honestly, probably start making gold or something. Uh, craft a bone frag? I don't remember.
Uh, I just don't know if we have any crafting.
Recipes.
I want the crafting table because you said the crafting table adjacent to whatever box has your stuff in it and it auto pulls it for you. Instead of having to have it in here.
That would be nice. Where is, we got bug meat? I'm gonna make some bug steaks.
Okay.
Cuz even though they're kinda gross, they are kinda handy. And the rest in the bait. Ate these lobster crabs. Okay. Where should we go? Ate it. Ooh, ooh. Nope, nope. How am I saying it? Gotta doubt the game. Is we talking about the workbench? Yeah, gotcha, gotcha. Right with that, okay.
Why is this chest still open?
Bag. I always put this in the tools. That could be really good with the hammer combo. Let's try it out. Uh. We ring in place of small mag. Check that we are, yeah, I think we're wearing them. Can't. Don't have any D rings. We don't have anything. Damage on, guess I can, I'll, I'll stop by and see if I can pick up any. Why hunt that prismatic slime, but.
Happen all over mine.
Bottom mark. Yep.
We're about to spend eight hundred dollars on cow.
Yep. Ooh, level five combat, uh, fighter or scout? Ooh, that's tough, that's tough. I can do all attacks, increase ten percent more damage or critical strike chance increased by fifty percent. That's. Which one did you go with?
I'm not level five combat yet.
Oh dang.
Which means, yeah, you get to pick first.
Uh, I'm gonna go with a crit chance.
I'm a bite of your bread.
I still got a piece of bread, go ahead.
I just wanna bite.
All yours. Right? Just a little bit of money.
It's a little bit.
And I'll be worth it because cow. That is a good point. That is a great point.
Oh, it's raining again.
I love fall.
Thanks for my aquamarine.
That charged power pack. Iron. Things all around. We're doing so good in the. Apartment. Back, iron bar. Oh, 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 oh. These. Um. Good to go. Ooh. Watched lightning strike our little lightning rod and it was spooky. Oh, actually, I'm gonna check how the spirits are doing. It's still early. I'm gonna check how the spirits are today and good, I'm gonna take geodes that we've been saving up over. Keller. Spirits are somewhat annoyed today. Wait. Oh, stopped by, well, the adventurer store doesn't open until like noon or some nonsense, right?
Too.
Yeah, that's.
I'd go to the mines, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just gonna go to the mines until two and then up to the top, freaking that way. Um, so I'm gonna start kinda low levels. So sixty, mid levels. See, neither of you look prismatic to me. Move on. There. Uh, there, I don't see a prismatic jelly. Squished. Hey, there we go. Real quick. Those all look like regular jellies to me. Old sprites. Hehehe. Hammer for the win. Oh, come on, man. That's a big bomb. Hey, good job on the peach. Oh, oh. You got a keg?
Yeah.
Yeah. Go. Uh. Here. Don't look prismatic to me, but hack it. See if we can just squish real. Just in case, my judgment is. Go. Oh no. Or is it already? Double check. Slab? No, okay. There's some. Here. Wait. Nope. It did do it. Perfect. Ooh. Wonder if I do. Two. Very bum. Need you. Um. Where is my prismatic slime? Ooh, cave carrots, there you are. Wrong, yep, wrong place. Go this way, see a bat. Oh. Perfect. How goes it back home?
I am actually walking back home. I stopped to fish, so I'm gonna go home. I'm going to start our keg.
Nice.
I'm gonna put a fruit in it before I put hops in it cuz it's harder to get wine than it is to complete the quest for cam.
Hmm, fair enough.
Oh, my mail's done. Hmm.
Burn. Perfect. Acting ghost. Eat. Cool. Trust me. Skipper, skipper, skipper. Oh. You too. Turn back up. And. Get off and slam. Hmm. Carrot. Yeah, I'm doing pretty alright on not finding these damn prismatic. Eh, I know if I just kill regular slimes, that'll also count towards layer tasks and stuff, so. Also do those. Head back up. We got it, but it's not really gonna help me find anything. Ooh, we got a lot on this one. Alright. Oh, I missed twice, crap. Oh wait, that one looks a little different. Go after that in a sec. Come on. Oh. Yep, 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 yep. Perfect. Just in case. Oh, well, that one I do. Come on, dude. Please be the one. Now. And a winter root, which is cool, but not what I'm looking for. Ah, alright, push on. Do they look like frozen jets? Um, I don't know if they actually are or if I can like that, but. Come on. Bring back. Actually, that's one of my other winter forges I need. Need to make room for that. Uh, sorry, turn this. Crystal fruit. Yeah, I'm pretty sure crystal fruit's one of the ones we need to turn in, right?
I think so.
Okay. Uh, I just got some.
For the winter fort.
Yeah. Yeah, I just picked up some crystal fruit, so if it is, uh, then we got that done. Oh yeah, hell yeah. I still cannot find a freaking prismatic slime. Crazy. This slime. I'll go towards my slime counts. Need a loot. Hold on, ghost coming. Whole bunch of slime. Hey, cow. The ghost slam, go. Get away, keep it away. Get for another slam, hit it. There we go. Winds all around. Great. Around. That. Bag there. Good. Ladder. Come on, just. Ed. Great. Useful, not what I wanted. Um, this one. Trust me. Ugh. For, ah, the frozen geode. Want it, want it. Add a bit of this. I need to get out of here. Try again tomorrow. Try a different level. Almost made it to seventy. Uh, running out of time for that to be a good idea. Come on. Game. Even ladder. Hey, you can act right off game. Okay, there. Yeah, yeah, let's go, let's go, let's go. Uh, pasta. Uh. Hey, it's my bed. Put it over. It's my bed anyway. A whole day in the freaking mines and you're gonna come sleep in my bed. Well, just put it over. Alrighty. So we're out.
Rainbow way.
I mean, not really. We're able to not like do nearly as much this way, so. I'm, I'm okay with it. As us to be pretty lazy about the farm. Forage, that way. Those in there. Yeah, dot. Cool. Alright, wish me luck.
Good luck.
I am going to find this freaking prismatic slime if it kills me. Made to seventies, right there. Good luck. Thank you. Thank you. Prismatic jelly. Final day, are you kidding me? Rare and dangerous. Well, hopefully I can freaking find it. I think skeletons would be weaker to a hammer or something.
I'm rooting for you.
I appreciate it. I hope, I hope I find it cuz I gotta find it in time to get it to the wizard. Lime Dady bless you. Eh, thank you. There you go. Push them quick.
Ooh, that's expensive. Just kidding, dairy cows are fifteen hundred.
Ooh, it's alright, it'll be worth it. We, we already planned to spend quite a bit of money.
So do you want me to go ahead and give the cow?
Yeah, go ahead, go, go.
I'm gonna name him Wellington.
That's a little messed up, but alright. I respect it, especially if it's a dairy cow that we don't plan to butcher.
Our, uh, our chickens are named after chicken dishes too.
Oh, that's right, I totally forgot. Hey, we're messed up, aren't we?
I think it's funny.
To me, yeah, I think it's a bit.
Wellington. Oh, I'll send little Wellington to her new home, sorry. Well, she's gonna be delicious.
Moving. Moving. Okay, good. Let me stop. Oh. At least they're not named after your father. Yeah, that's a fair point. That would probably harsh the vibe a little bit. Name, name our butchered animals for, after. It would be interesting though. I gave him the slip. Also totally not. Oh man. Eh, there we go. Seventy-five. Still on skeletons. I'm gonna try to go lower down. I'm gonna go like one hundred. I'll probably regret this. Beend. Smash. Deal. No. Alright, I dig this little bit of carrots. Magnet geode, alright. Take that as well. For YouTube. Steep dungeon. There it is. Need prismatic slime. Oh, that one's red. I've now fought them of every color, but not one that was. Gosh dang it. Uh-oh. What else? What do you need there? Come on, dog. Incoming, gonna squish. Pick up bug sticks. Great. This one. Looks like a slightly different color.
Oh, cause you're mining?
Hmm, I mean, not good because I'm not, like, actually mining, I'm going for prismatic slimes and I don't know that I've found one yet.
I'm sorry.
Nah, it's a... Just, uh... Unfortunate circumstance.
All are unfortunate.
Ooh! That was still a poor. Ah. No slime? Oh! Alright. Either I am not far enough in, or something else might turn me... So, I'm gonna go stop by... Here, see if there's any better gear I can... Think I'm gonna find him. Uh... Lava katana. Oh, okay, so that could maybe do better cuz it's got defense baked in, it's got crit power, it's got weight. It's twenty-five thousand. Jeez. Louise. Uh, steel falcon, little better, ocean, little better, but... Me neither. Doesn't even tell. Uh, we get rings. Mathis and topaz. The master slingshot upgrade. I already have one. Nope. I didn't go to... Like, it's kinda close, huh? Um... Four enemy types I still haven't even found. Come back when you got something to show me, kid. Uh... Feel like a... Alright, apparently not that. Lost connection to the server, so that is a quick way to refresh home. And then, how many more days would you like to play, Bips?
Hmm... Probably just...
Sounds good by me. Let's call it two and say it's good. Cool. Unless we need the third day. I think we should be good with two. Alrighty, alright. Yeah. Definitely got some...
Oh my gosh, our cows' first day at the farm and I forgot to pet them.
Oh no!
Now they're gonna hate.
You're really real well stocked up. Um... I'm gonna fail that quest, so I think I'll just go ahead and take my... Let me take my wood axe or my pickaxe up to Clint first?
Um... I don't know.
Alright, well, we'll just think about it, eh, we'll think about it, we'll do it next time, cuz we gotta balance, like, the... Frozen guns. It's gonna be in the thing for a while.
Well, if we process all of our tools... During fall, we don't have the greenhouse. No farming, other than...
Right, versus if it... Okay.
So if you go ahead and process them now...
Which one did you pick?
I took geology.
Okay, so I will take mine.
Yeah, but if we do them now, then we'll have them in, we'll have them done by winter, which is when we're gonna be... Armed.
Mm-hmm. Okay, yeah, that works for me.
If it's raining today... I don't know what I'm gonna do with myself, it's been raining for a week straight. Oh, sunshine!
Gotta go water our plants.
I can do that.
Let me check our fortune teller. Spirits are very displeased today. Wow! Not even gonna risk it. Got mayo. Blackberry season right now, bushes are full of them. Wanna pick some, but I lost my basket, can you help? Like this. Gotcha, buddy.
I love blackberry season, it's the easiest money, blackberries and salmon berries.
With that plum? It is a wild fun. Oohs?
Nope.
I just hope. Gotta say, the farm music is pretty good. Find Linus's basket.
Oh, I know exactly. We have a giant mushroom! That's so fucking exciting, don't you cut it down? I wanted to stay.
Give it.
Oh, it's so cute.
Heather. Blackberry.
I'm gonna put a tap on it.
What's it give you?
I don't remember, but all I know is that you can tap.
That's...
Mushroom.
Big room, nice. There we go. Oh! Large mouth bass. Perfect. Dead. Produces different mushrooms when tapped? That's sick!
That's really, actually.
Cuz that gives us the mushroom cave benefits, right?
Essentially, yeah.
Yeah. We are. Doing it! Any... Nope. Perfect. Easy money! Uh, did we turn in the ten corn already?
Hmm, I think, I think I turned.
Okay, I remember you saying that we were done with it, but... Did we turn?
Also, if... You need, if you can't find Linus's basket...
Alright, yeah, I haven't looked around too hard for it yet, but... Alright, aquatic overpopulation for other reasons, the local population of midnight carp has grown to an unsustainable level, I need a local... Help reduce their numbers. You wanna do some midnight carp fishing?
I don't know where the... Carp spawn.
Uh, well...
Yeah, sure. I just don't know where they spawn off of.
Carp, Stardew Valley. Carp fish can be caught in mountain lai- in the mountain lake or wilderness farm during... Spring, summer, or fall, which one did we take?
We took the farm.
Did we? It can also be caught in the secret woods, the sewers, or the mutant bug layer during any season. So, yeah, the, the mountain lake or wilderness farm.
Okay, yeah.
But we don't have either of those, we have the four corners farm.
Mountain lake is... The one by the mine.
Oh, okay, okay. Um, yeah, then we'll just take that one and we'll go fish for carp, it's probably gonna be at night, but we can probably just spend the whole day, the whole rest of the day fishing. Probably catch something worth it, aren't we?
Oh, it won't let me take the other one.
Oh!
Oh, I think it's cuz it's just active.
Gotcha, gotcha, catch ten midnight carp. We have seven days to do it. I am gonna go get to work. I also don't know if midnight carp is maybe a different kind of carp. I promise. Um... Just to be safe. Stardew Valley Midnight Carp. Midnight carp are officially gonna be caught in the mountain lake and the cinder sap... Forest pond during fall and winter late at night, it can also be caught on many of the non-standard farm map, forest, riverland, wilderness, and the large pond on the four corners map. Must be caught during any season in Ginger Island, north and west. Yeah, so you just gotta catch it at night, in, uh... Um... On most of the farms.
Okay.
Cool. I'm gonna go up to the mountain lake and fish.
That's where I'm at right now.
And I'm gonna fish there until it's late, late at night. It did say a very late at... And then, where's the good spot on this one, is it here? No, it's that, it's that. This one. Here. Lucky spot. Oh, regular carp. Wait. Head. Ooh, an iridium.
Add an iridium carp.
Nice! Got the fish and the treasure, let's go. Eight copper ore skeletal tail. Take the skeletal tail. Should start getting midnight carp soon, but probably gonna take a couple nights trying. It'd be probably somewhere in like ten and... Alright. Fifty inch carp? That's iridium, for sure.
Inch bullhead.
Damn! Perfect! Thirty-one inch bullhead. Made it.
Iridium.
Yeah. Up to two now. I'm gonna add midnight carp. Regular carp, two inches. Oh, we're gonna make some money off fish today.
Yeah.
Chub. Ooh, I just realized the time. We might have to make this our last day, I'm sorry, goose.
It's okay. I love you very, very, very much, but I do actively...
That is so fair.
And again, we just got to court!
Yeah. Yeah, can't pass up on.
Love nothing more than court. Court, high society, eight Bridgerton, oh, man. That stuff's just fascinating.
Catching green algae.
Yeah, I went through a little green algae scent too.
Okay. Yeah, unfortunately. And I, I make commitments based on schedule. But I had a great time today. And an absolute, thanks Stardew, talking about HelloFresh. Uh... Killing. Twenty-six, bullhead. Far. New midnight carp. One or two, just prove they're real. Gimme. Gimme. Make an easy move. Perfect. Regular carp, that's not a midnight carp, it's not midnight, gimme a midnight carp. Come on, come on. One or two more attempts is all I can afford, come on game. Bullhead, dang it! Alright, gotta go. Cuz I gotta go walk all the way around this to walk over to the mine so I can take the shortcut home. You can do it, Bibbs. Get a midnight carp. Midnight carp! Good job, goof. Oh shoot, no, I don't mean to mine that, bust up. Alright, we gotta go.
We gotta go, we gotta go, we gotta go.
We don't have time to sell fish, don't got time to go, nothing.
No, I'm gonna sell my fish!
No!
I'm doing it!
Alright.
Except the midnight carp, I'm not selling midnight.
Thank you.
You, you better pick a bed fast!
Made it, fine, no problems.
Let's go!
And before we even start the next day, let's check out how much money we earned fishing. Look at that! Heck yeah! Knuckles. Nice. Alright, and we're gonna go ahead and roll outro and I will catch you later chat, thank you so much for hanging out with us, having a great time talking about HelloFresh, and, uh, enjoying some good Stardew time. Uh, I will catch you later in the week for some Baldur's Gate, for some other non-sponsored streams, but for now, that'll be all for today and I will catch you later. Get some good rest, get some good food, uh, may I recommend a meal from HelloFresh, if you need some good food? And, uh, sponsor stream ends, uh, at the end of this month, so... Uh, if you guys are getting sick of this, don't worry, won't, won't be too many more streams now, but for now, catch you later.
Bye-bye!
Hey, bye!
Bye!